Okay, good morning, everyone. I'm Dan Grotnick, Chair of the City Planning Commission and Director of the Department of City Planning. Welcome to today's public meeting, which I guarantee will be shorter than the last one. We will begin with votes on projects across the five boroughs before getting to our public hearings. First up, the commission will vote on authorization to expand an existing two-story house at forty-seven fifteen Iselin Avenue in Fieldston, in the Bronx. From there, we'll head to Red Hook in Brooklyn to vote on a new commercial building at one fifty Mill Street. If approved, the development would include offices, ambulatory diagnostic uses, and retail, including a supermarket, all within walking distance of Red Hook Park, several bus stops, and the F and G trains at Smith Ninth Street Station. Also in Brooklyn, we'll vote on two fifty eighty-sixth Street. This proposal would legalize a two-story mixed residential and community facility building in Bay Ridge. The project, which includes a medical office, would map mandatory inclusionary housing to guarantee permanently affordable homes in the case of future development here or in the rezoning area. Making our way to Manhattan, we will vote on a new cancer care center at New York Presbyterian's Washington Heights Campus at one eighty Fort Washington Avenue. This proposal, sorry, this approval would allow the hospital to consolidate diagnostic and treatment services for cancer care and ambulatory surgery, which are currently spread across different buildings on the campus, into a new three hundred ninety-five thousand square foot state-of-the-art diagnostic and treatment services building that can accommodate the evolving needs of cancer care and provide space for research, innovation, and education, contributing to advancements in cancer treatment and care. An existing landscaped open area would be relocated and redesigned around the proposed building as well. Next up, the commission will vote on a residential project located at thirty-one seventeen twelfth Street in Astoria, Queens, near Socrates Sculpture Park and the Noguchi Museum. The building would include thirty-five homes, nearly ten of them income restricted. And the last two votes are for authorizations on Staten Island. The first on East Reading Avenue would facilitate eighteen semi-detached, single-family homes in Great Kills. The second, twenty-six East Loop Road, would facilitate a single-family detached home with an in-ground pool in Tote Hill. Switching to our public hearings, we'll first receive testimony on Garden of Youth Community Garden at seven forty-eight East one hundred eighty-second Street in the Belmont section of the Bronx. This acquisition is being sought by the Department of Parks and Recreation and would preserve the site's use as a community garden and help it receive capital for needed improvements such as installation of a new water source, a new fence, and more. This community resource, one of many such gardens in the area, is within walking distance of the Bronx Zoo and several bus lines. The public is also invited to testify on a proposed rezoning in Astoria, Queens. This rezoning would enable two new mixed-use developments with ground-floor retail along Twenty-first Street. The first building would contain over fifty homes, sixteen of them permanently income restricted, and the second would include nearly forty homes, a dozen of them permanently income restricted. Both buildings, a block away from Astoria Park and about half mile from the Astoria Boulevard subway station. Next on the agenda, three hearings for proposals in Manhattan. The first is Malcolm Shabazz Harlem Plaza, a project by the Department of Housing Preservation and Development for a one hundred percent income-restricted, mixed-use residential and community facility building with nearly one hundred ten homes, along with a renovated home for the Malcolm Shabazz Harlem Market. In addition to serving as a cultural hub, this building is close to the two and three trains at one hundred sixteen Street. Great example of transit-oriented development we hope to create more of in our City of Yes for Housing Opportunity proposal. Next is three forty-three West Forty-seventh Street. A proposal to demolish part of a four-story residential building with four dwelling units to facilitate its preservation and enlargement into a seven-story building with seven dwelling units. The building neighbors Ramone Aponte Playground and is in a transit-rich area close to the one, two, A, C, E, N, R, and W trains, now like an announcer on subway, at Forty-ninth and Fifty-first Streets. From there, we will hold a hearing on a proposed rezoning at seven oh one West Hundred Thirty-Fifth Street in West Harlem. This application would create sixty homes, around fifteen of them permanently income-restricted. The building is near Riverbank State Park, the Riverside Valley Community Garden, and the one train at one hundred thirty-seven Street City College, and its top two floors would cantilever over the Amtrak rails that run next to the Henry Hudson Parkway. Last but not least, the public is invited to testify on a proposed mapping of three new streets to facilitate the Alafia mixed-use development at eight seventy-five Erskine Street in East New York in Brooklyn, formerly the site of the Brooklyn Developmental Center. This large project would create around twenty-five hundred income-restricted homes and include commercial, community facility, and light manufacturing space, all within walking distance of the Shirley Chisholm State Park, Gateway Center Mall, and multiple bus lines. And lastly, following our public hearings, we're going to have a special review session for a post-referral review of a proposal to facilitate a new community facility building at seven seventy-three Neptune Avenue in Coney Island, Brooklyn. So, a lot of votes, a lot of hearings to get through today, so we will get right to it. Madam Secretary, the floor is yours.
Good morning. This is the City Planning Commission Public Meeting held remotely through the NYC Engage Portal and in-person in the CPC Hearing Room, one twenty Broadway, Lower Concourse. Today is Wednesday, July twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. I will now call the roll. Chair Grotnick?
Yes.
Vice Chair Knuckles?
Here.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Present.
Commissioner Cerulo absent. Commissioner Kral?
Present.
Commissioner Dweck absent. Commissioner Gold?
Here.
Commissioner Goodridge?
Here.
Commissioner Kurmani?
Here.
Commissioner Marin?
Here.
Commissioner Osorio?
Here.
Commissioner Rampaschad's remote?
Here.
A quorum is present. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the public meeting of Wednesday, July tenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Great, thank you very much. On the minutes, make a motion to approve the minutes of July tenth. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Gold, for the second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Okay, thank you. Minutes are approved.
Scheduling. Calendar numbers one through eleven, we have resolutions for adoption scheduling Wednesday, August seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, for a public hearing to be held in person in the CPC Hearing Room, one twenty Broadway, and remotely through the NYC Engage Portal.
Great, I make a motion to approve the resolutions. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Okay, resolution's adopted.
The next part of the calendar is the reports section on page seven. Borough of the Bronx, calendar number twelve, four seven one five Iselin Avenue, SNAD, CD eight, N two four zero one six two ZAX, in the matter of an application for the grant of an authorization concerning four seven one five Iselin Avenue, SNAD, for the adoption of calendar number twelve. Chair Grotnick?
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Aye.
Commissioner Kral?
Yes.
Commissioner Gold?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodridge? Commissioner Kurmani?
Yes.
Commissioner Marine?
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampaschad?
Yes.
Calendar number twelve has been adopted. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar number thirteen, one fifty Mill Street rezoning, CD six, C two two zero zero eight zero ZMK, in the matter of an application for zoning map amendment concerning one fifty Mill Street rezoning. For a favorable report on calendar number thirteen, Chair Grotnick?
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Aye.
Commissioner Kral?
Yes.
Commissioner Gold?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodridge? Commissioner Kurmani?
Yes.
Commissioner Marine?
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio?
I respectfully vote no. I voice my concerns regarding the land use rationale throughout the review process as noted by the Brooklyn Board President. Without a clear commitment and a fully fleshed-out plan to advance manufacturing inside the IBC, I cannot support the proposal. Thank you.
Commissioner Rampaschad?
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number thirteen. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar numbers fourteen and fifteen, two fifty eighty-sixth Street rezoning, CD ten. Calendar number fourteen, C two three zero three five four ZMK. Calendar number fifteen, N two three zero three five five ZRK. In the matter of applications for a zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning two fifty eighty-sixth Street rezoning. For favorable reports on calendar numbers fourteen and fifteen, Chair Grotnick?
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Aye.
Commissioner Kral?
Yes.
Commissioner Gold?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodridge? Commissioner Kurmani?
Yes.
Commissioner Marine?
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampaschad?
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers fourteen and fifteen. Borough of Manhattan, calendar numbers sixteen and seventeen, New York Presbyterian Irving Medical Cancer Center, CD eleven, calendar number sixteen, N two four zero two six four ZAM. Calendar number seventeen, M two eight four zero five six three E ZSM. In the matter of applications for the grant of an authorization and a modification of a previously approved special permit concerning New York Presbyterian Irving Medical Cancer Center. For the adoption of calendar numbers sixteen and seventeen, Chair Grotnick?
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Aye.
Commissioner Kral?
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck? My apologies. Commissioner Gold?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodridge? Commissioner Kurmani?
Yes.
Commissioner Marine?
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampaschad?
Yes.
Calendar numbers sixteen and seventeen have been adopted. Borough of Queens, calendar numbers eighteen and nineteen, three one seven, one seven, twelfth Street rezoning, CD one, calendar number nineteen, C two three zero zero two two ZMQ. Calendar number twenty, N two three zero zero two three ZRQ. In the matter of applications for a zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning thirty-one seventeen, twelfth Street rezoning. For favorable reports on calendar numbers eighteen and nineteen, Chair Grotnick?
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Aye.
Commissioner Kral?
Yes.
Commissioner Gold?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodridge? Commissioner Kurmani?
Yes.
Commissioner Marin?
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampaschad?
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers eighteen and nineteen. Borough of Staten Island, calendar numbers twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two, E Perkeelman and E Reading Avenue Development, CD three, calendar number twenty, N two four zero three two four RAR. Calendar number twenty-one, N two four zero three two five RAR. Calendar number twenty-two, N two four zero three two six RCR. In the matter of an application for the grant of authorizations and certification concerning E Perkeelman and E Reading Avenue Development. For the adoption of calendar numbers twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two, Chair Grotnick?
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Aye.
Commissioner Kral?
Yes.
Commissioner Gold? Commissioner Goodridge? Commissioner Kurmani?
Yes.
Commissioner Marine?
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampaschad?
Yes.
Calendar numbers twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two have been adopted. Borough of Staten Island, calendar numbers twenty-two and twenty-three, twenty-six East Loop Road. CD two, calendar number twenty-three, N two four zero two five four ZAR. Calendar number twenty-four, N two four zero two five five ZAR. In the matter of an application for the grant of authorizations concerning twenty-six East Loop Road. For the adoption of calendar numbers twenty-three and twenty-four, Chair Grotnick?
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Aye.
Commissioner Kral?
Yes.
Commissioner Gold?
Yes.
Commissioner Kurmani? My apologies. Commissioner Goodridge? Commissioner Kurmani?
Yes.
Commissioner Marin?
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampaschad?
Yes.
Calendar numbers twenty-three and twenty-four have been adopted. The next part of the calendar is the public hearing section on page nine.
Great, and welcome to members of the public who are here in person in the hearing room and also virtually to offer their views on the various items that are on the agenda today. We're going to ask members of the public to limit their testimony to three minutes. And let's get right into it with the first item of the day. And we're going to make some slight adjustments here to accommodate an applicant, but I'll allow you, Madam Secretary, to explain that.
Thank you, Chair. Please note, Neil Weisbart is going to present for the one thirty-fifth Street rezoning first due to a scheduling conflict. We will begin with the fifth item first. They will present, we will go through a question and answer, and we will continue with the hearing later on in the agenda. The fifth public hearing item is calendar numbers thirty through thirty-three for one thirty-fifth Street rezoning. This is a ten-minute team application.
Great, great, thank you very much, Madam Secretary. And just to be clear for the commission, we're going to start with the presentation, questions, answers. Then we're going to go back to our normal schedule, proceed with the public hearing all the way through, including this item, so that the public has an opportunity to be heard on this item in the order that it was anticipated. So, whenever you-
One second before we begin, we will announce the actual item.
Go ahead.
Borough of Manhattan, calendar numbers thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-three, one thirty-fifth Street rezoning, CD nine, calendar number thirty, C two three zero two zero six ZMM. Calendar number thirty-one, N two three zero two zero seven ZRM. Calendar number thirty-two, C two three zero two zero eight ZSM. Calendar number thirty-three, C two three zero two zero nine ZSM. Public hearing in the matter of applications for a zoning map and zoning text amendments and special permit concerning one thirty-fifth Street rezoning.
Great, go right ahead and introduce yourself, and we'll get right into it.
Great, first of all, thank you for accommodating me. My name's Neil Weisbart from the law firm of Seifar Shaw, and I appear before you on behalf of the owner of seven oh one West Hundred Thirty-Fifth Street. I'm very excited to present this project to you today, which we believe, if approved, will completely transform and revitalize this little corner of northern Manhattan. The site is located on the west side of Twelfth Avenue, between West Hundred Thirty-Fifth Street to approximately halfway between West one thirty-six and West one thirty-seven Street. It's a twelve-thousand-square-foot lot, which is currently improved with a two-story eating and drinking establishment, which is currently not in operation. The area of the rezoning includes a development site, seven oh one West Hundred Thirty-Fifth Street, and extends over Lot sixty as well to the edge of the railroad right-of-way, and also includes Lot fifty-five, which is the portion of Twelfth Avenue located in front of the site, which is owned by the city and is part of Riverside Park. There are numerous actions, one being a rezoning from an M one-one to an R seven-two with a C two dash four commercial overlay, mapping as a mandatory inclusionary housing area, a special permit, since the property is over a railroad right-of-way, an amendment to the Special Manhattanville Mixed Use District to include this area as an other area, and the creation of a special permit within the other area for properties next to a right-of-way to modify bulk regulations other than floor area, and then a special permit pursuant to this new text to waive lot coverage and rear yard requirements. The proposal is to construct a fifty-three thousand-square-foot, seven-story, seventy-one-and-a-half-foot-high, mixed-use building with approximately, with sixty units, and approximately fifteen to eighteen will be affordable. The ground floor will contain small retail spaces, such as a bike shop, a juice bar, a healthy café, which is perfectly suited for the bicyclists of the waterfront greenway, which is located right at the site, kayak and canoeers from the West Harlem Launch Site, which is located three blocks south of the site, as well as active users of Riverbank State Park, which is located three blocks north of the site. The building will be cantilevered on the sixth and seventh floors over Amtrak, and we could talk more about this, but the building will not be constructed until there has been a thorough review from Amtrak and with their engineers and our team, and provided that Amtrak determines that the building can be constructed safely and compatible with the rail line, the building will be approved and construction will commence. The building will contain thirty studio apartments, twenty-six one bedrooms, and four two bedrooms. It's important to note that DOT also has proposed improvements for Twelfth Avenue, right in front of the site, which they should commence at the end of two thousand and twenty-five. It will include reconstructed sidewalks on the east side of Twelfth Avenue, eight-foot parking lanes, and a shared vehicle and bike lane. Although the height of the building can exceed seventy-one-and-a-half feet, in order to minimize the impacts of the residences on Riverside Drive, the building is capped out at the height of the parapet of Riverside Drive, other than the bulkhead, which extends above the parapet wall. From these renderings, you can see this, on the right is an actual photograph of the site, and on the left are renderings, and there really will be no impact from the proposed building, since it is constructed below the parapet height. It's also important to note that this area is heavily treed. The picture on the right is an actual picture from December with no leaves on the trees, and the number of trees blocks the site. On the left is the rendering, and you can't even see the building at all. And just to give you context of what this area looks like during, when there are leaves on the trees, it's densely leafed and will not be visible from people who are walking on Riverside Park. I could go through these actions, but the first one is a rezoning M one to an R seven-two, which will allow residents on the site and allow a building with approximately an FAR four-point-six to be constructed. The area also requires a special permit to construct over the railroad right-of-way. The area will also be included in the Special Manhattanville Mixed Use District, and we commend the department for coming up with this creative idea of including this as an other area and then creating a special permit to allow us to modify bulk and the bulk regulations, which, the site's an extremely narrow site, and if a rear yard was provided, a feasible building couldn't be constructed, and also seeking a waiver of lot coverage. I have some plans in front of you, which Steve, like Go to the Architect, will speak to, and Keon and Meehan from Steve's office will all talk about some flood resiliency measures. But in conclusion, it's our belief that this project, along with DOT's planned improvements, will completely revitalize this area between- will completely revitalize this area between West one hundred and thirty-fifth Street and West one hundred and thirty-eight Street, will provide value amenities to the active users of the numerous open spaces in the area, and most importantly, will create sixty dwelling units, which between twelve and eighteen will be affordable. And we strongly agree with Borough President Mark Levine, who stated in his favorable recommendation that this project can be a transformative cornerstone in the area. And I'd like to hand it over to Steve Wiegota to talk about the building. Those are just floor plans, if you want to-
Okay. Good morning, my name is Shlomo Steve Wiegota, I'm the architect for this current development, and also was the architect for this building going back fifteen to twenty years, where we had clubs and all the New York Yankees going there and all kinds of events going on, and all of that failed, it just didn't last, and even had one of the former governors go there at one point. So we've taken an empty site, and a vacant site, and transformed it into something vibrant. I'm extremely excited about this because it'll be a big asset for Harlem. I went to City College, so I know the area well. And, you know, I just can't wait, I've been working on this project for years, and finally we'll create something that's of value to the city.
Kieran, would you want to, there were some questions at certification about some of the flood resiliency measures, so Kieran Meehan from Steve's office will speak-
Yeah, Kieran is one of our budding architects, and so I'm going to give him the ability to talk.
Kieran Meehan, SW Architecture. Yeah, essentially during our variance review, there were some questions regarding the flood measures. Yeah, we actually have the building raised the first floor to two foot seven with steps and ramps for the design flood elevation. Utilities are going to be raised to six foot six above the base plane, and we're going to do a combination of wet floodproofing in the residential area and dry floodproofing in commercial. The wet floodproofing will also have waterproof construction and allow egress from the residents
Okay, so that's our previous-
Great, is that it?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, all right, terrific, came in under your time. Okay, let me just, let me start, and I'm sure there'll be other questions here. First, obviously, this is not something you see every day with a proposed building cantilevering over a railroad track. I understand that you have not yet resolved the questions about the safety appropriateness, et cetera, about doing such a thing. Do you have reason to believe that Amtrak would be supportive and or entertain this as a possibility here?
So back in twenty seventeen, we had initial discussions with Amtrak, and that's when they told us we need to have a full review, but there was no indication that this can't be done, but we won't know until we actually do M E P plans and have a thorough review. They did authorize the filing of the application, and it's sort of a wait-and-see, but we're hopeful that we can address any issues they may have and see this project through fruition.
The, thank you. On Twelfth Avenue, obviously, this is a site that is somewhat isolated because of the inability to access it directly when heading westbound on one hundred and thirty-fifth Street, you have to kind of do that loop around, right, vehicle access, and even pedestrian access, you have to go down a very significant flight of stairs from Riverside Drive down to Twelfth Avenue or through the Twelfth Avenue access points, correct?
There's two ramps at one thirty-eight Street off of Twelfth Avenue that lead to Riverside Park going north and south, or you could walk up to Broadway. And I actually took the subway to the one thirty-seven Street Station, it took me seven minutes to walk from the subway to the site.
Fair and accurate, but still also a little bit off the grid from the main, you know, the main, right, so it's not the easy, it's not the easiest place, but this is not a commentary on its appropriateness, but it is, it's just a little bit, you know, off the main drag here. My question for you is about the Twelfth Avenue improvements and how this will work and integrate into this development, because Twelfth Avenue becomes extremely important, at least Twelfth Avenue between one thirty-five and one thirty-eight becomes extremely important for this, as I'm sure you would agree. Tell us a little bit about what you anticipate, how that would improve the access, and how that would make this, you know, a more, a more complete experience.
So we believe D O T understands that this area has not been well maintained, and that's why they initiated their proposed improvements. When, you've heard about the sinkhole, when we were discussing having the sinkhole repaired, D O T told us to hold off because they have these planned improvements for the end of twenty twenty-five. So we believe these improvements will revitalize this area, be definitely beneficial for the new building as well as the residents of the surrounding area, and we will ensure that the construction of this building will be in line with the D O T improvements, will work with D O T throughout the process.
And can you say a little bit about what those improvements look like, what those are contemplated to be?
Back to- So this is the plan that D O T submitted to City Planning and City Planning forwarded to us. The building, you can see the building to the north, this is not prepared by us, this is actually a D O T document. I put in the text below that there was a few pages to this, but they're going to reconstruct the sidewalks on the east side of Twelfth Avenue, which are in desperate need of repair. And the applicant also stated that they would make the improvements if D O T did not do that to the east side of Twelfth Avenue, because it's important to both the building and the surrounding area. They'll also have improved parking lanes, eight-foot parking lanes on this area, and they'll also create a shared vehicle and bike lane with landscaping as well.
Okay, thank you. Let me go to Vice Chair Knuckles and then Commissioner Benjamin.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to follow up on the chair's first question. Are you aware of what findings you might have to meet from Amtrak should you get to that point?
There are certain clearance findings, and Jason, do you want to speak to that? Jason Diaz from V H B, our environmental consultant?
Hi, so yeah, there are certain clearance requirements that Amtrak would have, specifically for this site, there would have to be a clearance of eight feet from the center line of the tracks to the building, which we achieve, I think it's fourteen and a half, something around that ballpark. So we're achieving that requirement in terms of height clearance, there's a requirement of twenty-three feet, the clearance that we're providing is thirty-
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three, thank you. So we're meeting all those requirements. I think there was some concerns, not during the review session, but maybe questions that came earlier regarding getting cranes into the space below the cantilevered portion of the buildings. While I can't speak definitively on, you know, what Amtrak has in terms of cranes, I do know that they do have low-profile cranes for tunnels, like tunneled areas throughout Amtrak, so I don't imagine it would be an issue to get a crane, a specific crane that they might have to get in this space, because again, they have cranes that, low-profile cranes, that do operate within tunnels that are confined in smaller spaces, so, yeah.
One other thing I could add too is that they're clearly going to be looking at the structural stability of the building next to the tracks, so that will have to be shown through findings that the construction of the building will not impact the structural stability of the tracks themselves.
What about construction, should you get to that point? What about construction of the actual building and how you would interact with train, train routing?
Yeah, yeah, just briefly, so we're going to keep the wall that exists, we're going to keep the building, we're going to keep the wall that exists on the west side, we're going to insert columns inside of that wall, go straight up, we're going to do roof protection like you would normally do over other buildings, and we'll do these at the minimum of twenty-three, whatever Amtrak requires. So as we go vertically up, we protect their trains, and we don't intend to work, it's almost like building next to a building, you know, we don't intend to encroach, we intend to safeguard their property with overhead protection, and we've hired, probably hired Severed, who did Madison Square Garden, you probably all know them, to work with us on the cantilever, cantilever is very doable. I have to take credit for that idea, because otherwise we would have lost a lot of residences, and the beauty of this thing is that we can offer fifteen to eighteen units permanently affordable and other units. Columbia's nearby, we expect some student housing in there as well. So constructability is very doable.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, Commissioner Benjamin.
Hello, two questions, thank you for being here. The first is more information, I don't know if you're able to give it to me, about the sinkhole, whether this is a D E P sinkhole or a D O T sinkhole?
Yeah, yeah, the sinkholes, I've been on this project for a long time, what happened was the previous owner, Peter, there was no drainage, the water was coming down Twelfth Avenue, it's a very high slope, so the water was coming into his building, God forbid the Yankees were going to get washed out. So he cut underneath the curb, he cut slots, the water went under there, and took away the soil that was there, and when we were doing soil borings for testing, that portion of the sidewalk collapsed. D O T will come in, we will come in, and ensure that the drainage is done properly, Peter's long since sold the building, and will have proper drainage to prevent, the sinkhole was just, nobody expected it, but it was the result of a landowner doing something without permits, or however way you want to describe it.
Okay, so it's not related to the outfalls?
To the-
Outfalls?
No.
And to the sewage that-
It's a D O T issue. I have personally gone with D O T to try to get this repaired as well, so I've worked with D O T.
And if D O T's work does not commence or is not completed by the time your project is ready to come online, are you going to do anything?
Yeah, part of our scope is what's called the B P P Builders' Pavement Plans, so as we redo the sidewalk, we'll also redo the drainage that goes into that. So it behooves D O T to come in at the same time. We expect, if all goes well, to start construction later this year or next year. I still have a lot of construction documentation to do on bidding and all that, so if nothing else, we'll take care of the sidewalk that we're required to do by law.
It will take coordination with D O T, we're not going to be able to commence work until D O T tells us it's time. We've tried to do this repair, they told us now you can't do this repair because of the proposed improvements, so however long they tell us you can start, that's when we can start. That's my understanding at this point.
Okay, and my second question has to do with the apartment distribution within your proposed building. The vast majority of the apartments are not for families.
Right.
And they're just four two-bedroom apartments?
I'll let Steve talk to it.
And will, how many of those four will be affordable? One?
We haven't determined that, but they have to be spread out, at least one, and they have to be on a north and south end because of the air and light easement agreements, yes. We can do, I'm sorry, we-
Go ahead.
No, no, go, I'm sorry.
I was going to ask, is there any way to get, since this is a community that also has a lot of families, and family housing is something we're desperate for, is there any way to get more family-sized units in this building?
Yes, there is, so we've done a lot of studios, small apartments side by side, so those can be combined into one and two bedrooms as well. They're all facing Twelfth Avenue, because that's where our air and light faces.
And you could, is there any-
That's on the upper floors, yeah.
Are you talking to H P D or to financing agencies about changing that apartment mix?
We haven't spoke, we haven't brought on a sponsor yet, we're waiting to see what happens with the application, and then we'll start working with H P D. And- I mean, the site unfortunately is so narrow that it's sort of limited to make a return here, but ownership would be amenable to, I think, creating more than, more one or two bedrooms than studios.
I mean, in essence, it's just a single-loaded corridor instead of a double-loaded corridor. It has the same issues with windows, I presume, that you can only have windows on one side, so that limits you, but you're right, you can combine some of the studios and get a more robust distribution of apartments that particularly for the affordable apartments would more reasonably reflect the needs of the community.
Agreed, and we intend to do so, we intend to talk to H P D, we'll work with Alvin Shine on doing, we've done other buildings that have affordable mix in it, and that's our intention.
Okay, and could you provide for us some idea of what that might look like, the apartment distribution, if you were able to do that?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Osorio?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation and for addressing our questions. I wanted to follow up on two points raised by the community board, who, you know, as you know, is very concerned regarding some of the findings of the E A S, but also just in general, sort of like the, what seems to be a really intense sort of process, and I wanted to give you the opportunity to share with us, like, some of your responses in terms of the concerns. In the resolution that we got from June, in addition to concerns regarding the cantilever, the proximity to the highway, and the flooding issues, the community board also mentioned some concerns regarding the natural gas pipeline compressor, and I'm wondering if you can speak a little bit about that. But just in general, can you describe to us what's been the process in which you've engaged with the community, the community board, but also the community, in terms of addressing their concerns, in addition to your plan to responding to the requirements in the building code? Sounds like this is a community that is actually concerned with the quality of life of these units, so I'm wondering if you can share with us a little bit, you know, what has been the process to engage with them?
Well, so the process started back in twenty seventeen, we originally met with City Planning, recommended a C six two, I believe, and we had a fourteen-story building. We met informally with the Landage Committee of Community Board Nine, they suggested that we lower the height below the parapet, and we did that, and so that's how we proceeded. When we went to the hearing on, a couple months ago, there wasn't, didn't seem to be much concern about the height, it was all about, are people going to be able to occupy this building safely? And we believe that that answer is a definite yes, it will not be constructed without the residents being safe, and that will be through both the Amtrak review and with Department of Buildings. The compressor, I don't remember that being brought up at the community board hearing, but you-
I'm not sure what, there's a pipe sixty feet below, I'm not sure what you're referring to with in terms of compressor-
They might have been talking about the sinkhole.
It's, I think it's related, but it's a different issue, they're specifically highlighting the natural gas pipeline compressor at one thirty-fifth Street. I don't recall them talking about that.
I mean, we could get back to you in writing, I'm not-
Sure, yeah, cool, thank you. Then the second question that I had is, you know, and you, I think, hinted at that today, but it's clear that you are pursuing residential here after a history of other types of uses, and so one of the things that the community board is highlighting is whether, you know, this should actually be reconsidered and actually redeveloped as a commercial or industrial, and so I want to, I want to ask a little bit about, you know, what has been sort of like your process to actually market the property in its sort of like historic configuration, like, help us understand a little bit, you know, to what extent you've actually marketed in that direction and why you've decided to pursue residential?
So for a year, well, since ownership took all this property, they tried to find a user for the entire building, they spoke to Columbia, they spoke to a brewery, and Columbia said the site's unfortunately too small for what they need, and the brewery was actually ready to go in, and then they reexamined, and they said it's too small. And that's when ownership got fed up and said, we have to do something with this property, we think residential would be great here, we're still going to maintain the commercial uses on the ground floor, active uses, uses that the community could take advantage of, not a nightclub, and the rezoning won't change the, this building was never used as a true manufacturing building, it's been a eating, eating and drinking establishment, but there's never been any true manufacturing on the site, but the C two dash four commercial overlay will allow the commercial uses, and we believe these retail uses will revitalize this neighborhood.
Thank you, is that something you can provide to us in writing?
The history of, sure.
Yeah, the efforts to, the hardship essentially, if there has been, thank you. Yeah, yeah, the efforts to, the hardship essentially, if there has been, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Gold.
Thanks, just, just wanted to, excuse me, by way of follow-up. Um, so first, um, Amtrak at this point, um, obviously there's been a lot of discussion there, and we've seen, you know, some of, uh, the letters. Um, when you think about, how would you characterize at this point the discussions? I mean, is it, you know, are, are they sort of far enough on board that it's about papering it, or are there still some pieces that need to be negotiated?
So I actually was emailing with the Deputy General Counsel two weeks ago, he gave me the name of the new person who's gonna be handling this review, but everything is just informal at this point, but we know that if this is approved, we know the, the people to reach out to right away, and we have the support of the Counsel's Office to help us get to the finish line.
Perfect, got it. And then, um, the Borough President, uh, one of his recommendations was to find, you know, some form of either public benefit or public park. Have we thought about that at all, do we have any ideas on how maybe we can...
So we would like to provide the community with a community facility space. There is floor area in the building dedicated to community facility, and we'd be happy to work with the Community Board Nine and some of the other local, local associations to find out what use could be appropriate, sure.
Just as a thing, if you look at the roof, it's a green roof, and, uh, it's, uh, it's eco-friendly, uh, it'll have glamorous views, and we have a couple gardens north of us, and our ownership, I'm sure, will be glad to help. I've seen those gardens, those community gardens, will be glad to help assist in any way to improve those, but we're offering a lot of, uh, you know, state-of-the-art current, green roof and, uh, and, uh, community facility. The whole ground floor is available for, uh, community facility uses or commercial uses.
I thi, I think it would definitely be worthwhile, if you haven't, you know, making that known, because, uh, the community facility, um, potential is actually, you know, um, I think would be well-received.
Okay.
Um, the other thing I just wanted to follow up on was, uh, the Vice Chair's question about, you know, essentially overhead protection. So is it, you know, on a typical construction project, when we're thinking about that, we think about, you know, I don't know, wood on the top of a building, let's just say. Um, is this more complicated, or is it really that simple, where, you know, you go up twenty or thirty feet and put out, and, you know, with, with the cantilever, I imagine it's probably a little more challenging?
This has been done before further south, where we, where Amtrak flies through, um, so whatever the complexity is, I mean, they just built something of one Vanderbilt Towers, and I've done a few of these projects myself. So whatever the complexity is, whether it requires rather than wood going out thirty feet, Amtrak will tell us and we'll do it, because, uh, we could cantilever, uh, overhead protection as well, so, uh, you gotta keep the trains safe, you gotta keep, uh, the, the, uh, construction workers safe, we're gonna have an OSHA representative, so we're gonna do everything that's required, God bless, that's required to maintain safety.
Okay, so, so, I mean, I guess my point is you've given it a lot of thought and you think it's feasible, that...
Oh, uh, I'm pretty certain that it's feasible, yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, before we, uh, uh, close here, at least for the moment, and we'll pick it up again, uh, let me just ask a question about, um, Riverside Valley Community Garden, uh, something that was raised by Riverside Park Conservancy in their comments to the Community Board, uh, concerned about potential impact there. Obviously that garden is on Hundred Thirty-Eighth Street, not, not right here, but can you address those concerns and, um, and let us know your, your view on that?
Yeah.
Can you address this?
Yeah, so, no, I, I walked by the gardens, I've been to the site numerous times, so we'll protect there, we, we have to have overhead protection all around our building to, we'll protect theirs. They also have a small garden across the street of Twelfth Avenue, we'll protect that as well. But, uh, we're open to meet with them to discuss any asks that they have and help them in any way. It's very feasible.
When you say will protect, what, what, what do you mean in that?
Overhead protection for their garden, 'cause they come right up to us on the north end.
Are you talking about during construction that they are concerned about?
You know, it was, they were more concerned about the, um, I think sunlight, the shadows, uh, I mean, they were, I don't know if it was more, more, more detailed than that in their comments, I, but I did wanna give you a chance to...
Did you a detailed shadow analysis?
To address. So what you're saying in terms of protect, construction protection is what you're saying, now let's talk about the other stuff.
Yeah, so we, we did perform a detailed shadows analysis, um, and we identified, you know, several, um, you know, sunlight-sensitive resources, you know, within the tier-one, tier-two, uh, radii of the developed site. And we found, you know, based on our studies, there, there would be no impacts, um, that the, each resource would receive adequate sunlight, um, you know, the six to eight required, uh, for most vegetation, um, so, yeah, based on the EAS, uh, no concerns there.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, I don't see further questions for you all, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
And, uh, Madam Secretary.
I think Commissioner Reberschott's handling.
Uh, my apologies, Commissioner, um, go right ahead.
I was gonna ask the question about, uh, the site connection. I know you mentioned the BPP and you can't do anything yet because of DOT. I was just curious, um, are you connecting onto Twelfth Avenue when you do the new construction? I was gonna deserve, I couldn't really see what type of sewer that was fronting the property, so I was just curious.
Yeah, there are sewers running down Twelfth Avenue, and we're gonna connect to those. The problem was, uh, not the sewers from, not the, uh, discharge from our building, the problem was the water coming down the hill and, and, and just draining like crazy when a heavy rain came down. So DOT is gonna work on that, and we're gonna also have some catch basins that were never installed, uh, along the curb on, uh, on our sidewalks, so that'll be part of our BPP, but it'll be a joint effort with DOT, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you, Commissioner, and thank you all, uh, very much for this. Um, okay, so we're going to come back to this one a little later in our agenda for public comments, but let us go back to our, uh, normally scheduled programming here, Madam Secretary, so, back to you.
Borough of the Bronx, calendar number twenty-five, Garden of Youth Community Garden, CD six, C two-four-zero-three-two-zero-PQX, public hearing in the matter of an application for an acquisition concerning Garden of Youth Community Garden.
Great, uh, and I have a registered testify here, um, on behalf of applicant team, Colleen Alderson, Nicole Pavez, and Anne Lau, um, from various agencies of the great city of New York. So welcome, and whenever you are ready, you can proceed.
Good morning, um, City Planning Commission and Chair and Commissioners. Uh, my name is Colleen Alderson, I'm the Chief of Parklands and Real Estate for the New York City Parks Department. I'm here to present the application before you regarding the acquisition, an acquisition in the Bronx. Um, so, um, the Garden of Youth, it's located two blocks southwest of the Bronx Zoo, situated in Bronx Park, it's in the Belmont neighborhood, Community District Six. Um, this is an aerial view of the location, it's southwest corner of one-eighty-second Street and Prospect. And in terms of the action before you, um, the intention is to preserve the site, use as a community garden. Parks and Decasts, the co-applicant, proposed that the city acquire the two lots that make up the Garden of Youth today, an active community garden in the community. Some information about the garden, um, these are some pictures of the garden. The garden is deeply enmeshed in the community. There are thirteen members that have plots and many more community members that participate in garden activities. The garden leader, Rufino Medina, is in the garden most days and welcomes people from the community to enter the garden. There are plots at the garden specifically set aside for youth educational programs. The gardeners give away produce for free to the local community members, they also sell their produce at local farmers' markets, with the proceeds being invested back into the garden. The Garden of Youth, uh, receives support from many different entities, including the Mary Mitchell Center, the Greensum Office of the Parks Department, Councilmember Felice, the New York Botanical Garden, New York Compost Project, corporate sponsors and other volunteers. The, the garden itself is, uh, partners with local schools and daycares to host field trips for young, uh, children in the community. The garden also has partnerships with the Bronx Action Committee and the Familia Verde, which is a coalition of community gardens in the Bronx. Where it's situated in terms of zoning, um, the garden is located in an R seven-dash-one zoning district, which is characterized by medium-density apartment buildings. There is the commercial overlay, so there are small businesses in the area providing delis and laundromats, the usual, um, uh, uses that serve community members. In terms of land use, the garden is located within, um, the red outlined square, it's a primarily a residential area, there are public facilities and institutions as well, there is industrial, there's like a gar, uh, there's a bakery operation to the northeast. Um, there is another community garden located down Prospect Avenue called, called the Garden of Happiness. Um, in terms of the two, the existing community garden, it's made up of two lots today. We have Lot thirty-three and Lot thirty-two. Different owners, different sizes. Lot thirty-three is the larger community garden, it's over six thousand square feet, has frontage both of, on one-eighty-second and Prospect Avenue. Lot thirty-two is the smaller lot, the interior one, it's one thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet. In terms of ownership, um, Lot thirty-three, the larger lot on the corner, it's owned by Kretone? Oh, sorry, I'm out of time. Okay, sorry, I forgot my time. Oh, keep going, okay. Owned by Kretona Community Coalition, subsidiary of the Northwest Bronx Community and Clergy Coalition, an independent nonprofit. Originally, they intended to offer the lot as a donation to the City of New York, but due to a judgment recorded against the lot, and because we want to have this property with clear title, it put us in an acquisition action in coordination with Law Department as we were advised, so that's why we're here. Lot thirty-two, the smaller lot, that's owned by a different entity, Corey Kretona Harms, uh, uh, Home, sorry, a defunct developer. Um, they have not been maintaining the site, the garden has been stewarding that as part of the garden site. Um, that lot is in the tax lien foreclosure process. Um...
Okay, that is your, that is the time, but I, I, let, let's just start, let's start right there, because I think that, um, that's a question that came up in the review session, and that I think that there's a fair amount of interest, including from me, about how that all works and what it means to be taking title to a property that has an outstanding trip and fall judgment on it, and also the tax lien, uh, process. So let's start, let's start right there. Or you can continue, if that was what you were about to answer, let's just go right into it.
Sure, so Lot thirty-three, the larger property with the active member and stewardship of the lot, it is owned by a not-for-profit that does not have the financial means to pay the judgment. For the city to acquire this property, we always acquire, we wanna make sure we're acquiring clear title to the property. The judgment would appear in a title report, so when we acquire this property, the city will be paying the judgment amount. The not-for-profit does not have the means to do that. Our Greensum Office, we have the resources to pay the judgment amount so that the city can end up with the community garden with clear title. That's Lot thirty-three, the larger lot, the over six thousand square foot lot. So that's the situation with that one. We've been much in dialogue with folks at Decasts and the Law Department about that situation, um, that ended up, we've been talking about the donation for some time, then the judgment happened, which then put us into a ULP action, because the moment the city pays money, that means we are technically acquiring the property by paying that judgment amount. So we're prepared to do that through the Parks Department, so that the city can acquire this property and that community garden can continue to thrive for the community.
What is the judgment amount, um, that the city's paying for that?
It's a little over two hundred thousand, I think it's two hundred and thirteen thousand recorded against the lot.
Okay, now talk about the other one.
Lot thirty-two, and I will say that, um, Anne Lau is here from the Department of Finance, um, to go into more detail about the sat, tax lien foreclosure process, um, but in essence, that is the situation for that one. Different owner, um, an entity to not pay taxes, has in the process of the tax lien foreclosure, it's in process now, we're not clear how it's gonna end up. And so as we were going through this ULP application, we thought, because the garden is stewarding that lot that has been not developed, underutilized for a number of years, we thought it efficient and prudent to include that lot in our application, should it turn out in, in a different owner's name, and we might be able to purchase the lot, if that is the scenario that happens. So we're not sure, Anne Lau can explain exactly where the process is and what might be the scenarios, um, as that tax lien foreclosure process goes through the required steps.
Great, let's, let's ever do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chairs, Commissioners, and my name is Anne Lau from Department of Finance. I'm going to talk about the tax lien sale and the tax lien, um, foreclosure process. So, um, it begins with the, um, tax lien, is a legal claim based on the, um, real property for the unpaid property tax, water insurer, and other property charges, as well as the interest on these taxes and charges. When the outstanding amount above a legally specific, uh, threshold has been delinquent for a legally specified period of time, and the city has mailed notices to the property owner, the City of New York is allowed to sell the liens to the authorized third payer, I mean, third party, who becomes the tax lien purchaser. The new tax lien purchaser then has the authority to collect the money that was previously owed to the city, plus other fees and interest. In the city lien sale program, the tax lien purchaser is a statutory trust, the trust, set up and closely monitored by the city to ensure the trust is adding in compliance with the trust documents. After the liens are sold to the trust, the lien only owns the lien, the trust only owns the lien, not the underlying property itself. So the property owners still hold the title to the property and may pay off the liens to the trust. And the trust will then hire professional servicers to attempt to collect the delinquent taxes and charges. If the property owner does not voluntarily redeem the lien or entered into the installment payment plan with the servicer before one year after the date of the lien sale, it is then the liens become a subject to foreclosure. So this is the first part to talk about the tax lien sale. Now, let's move on to the tax lien foreclosure. So after the one-year, um, period, um, they haven't redeemed the lien or entered the installment payment plan, the servicer or the trust can initiate the foreclosure process. And prior to the foreclosure being filed, if a property owner receives a thirty-day demand letter warning them that a foreclosure filing, um, is going to be entered unless they contact the servicer for the arrangement to satisfy the lien. And the New York City tax lien, a foreclosure in a judicial process, which are filed in each county bo, um, county court in the same manner as the mortgage in accordance with the New York State law, that is the newest, the civil practice law and rules and the real property action and proceeding law. And the foreclosure process can take about like two to three years to complete, and the property owner has the right to redeem during this process. Um, this process actually is a court-administered auction. And throughout the, um, auction process, there's a, a couple steps from the beginning of the file that I'm going to go through step by step. So the foreclosure complaint is filed in the county where the property is located. Then the owner and the other interested parties are provided legal notice of the foreclosure, complain, and given the opportunity to present defense to the court. The court then appoints a referee, that is the attorney, to certify the delinquent amounts due. The trust seek the judgment against the property. Court issued the final judgment against the property, and then auction is scheduled by the referee. And the auction is held on the courthouse steps. And based on the servicing agreement, the servicer is required to bid in the full amount owed to the trust at any judicial foreclosure auction. If no third party bid is greater than the amount owed to the trust, the trust is deemed as the winning bidder at the auction. If there's a higher... If there's a higher highest bidder that has to, um, win the auction, that highest bidder has the right to take the ownership of the property by paying the big amounts to the referee in exchange for a property deed issued by the referee. And, um, it took, it's going to take like thirty to forty days to complete the closing from the auction day. And finally, the trust will receive the proceed, the lien is released, and any big amount in excess of the delinquent tax lien amount owed is distributed by the court to the subordinate lien holders or the owner of the property. And that will conclude the process of the tax lien foreclosure process.
Great, thank you very much, um, that's very helpful. Now, let's apply that to the situation here. Um, on the slide that we have up right now, um, it says that the property is in tax lien foreclosure and that it was in fact sold to a highest bidder for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, um, that means that in this case, all of those steps that you just described happens. The trust took it, a year lapsed, payment was not made, trust proceeded toward foreclosure, entered into foreclosure by court, et cetera, et cetera, and then sold on the steps of the courthouse. And there was a bidder higher than the amount that was due and that amount was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and it was sold in fact, is that correct?
It was so, um-
On the steps of the courthouse steps or whatever you described it? I'm sorry?
But the closing is pending, yes.
Okay, so the, the, there was a highest bidder and it will be sold pending the, once it's closed, it is in the process of closing now?
Correct.
Okay, and, um, who, who is, who is that owner? Who is that?
Uh, Quarry Kretona Homes is the current owner of this Lot thirty-two.
I'm sorry, this was, uh, say that name again?
Quarry, Quarry Kretona Homes.
Oh, that's Quarry Kretona, that's, they are the folks who just were the highest bidder?
No.
No, I'm not asking that question, I'm asking who was the highest bidder?
It's an individual that I can provide the name, uh, from the court document, I don't have it with me.
Oh, okay, got it. Okay, now, um, the action that's before us is to give the city the ability to possibly acquire it from that entity, the name that we don't have here, but the, and the folks who bid two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and will be closing at some point in the future. Is that, is that, uh, a fair understanding of what is being proposed here?
Correct.
Okay, all right, I've got it, thank you, appreciate that. Let me go to Commissioner Goodrich and Commissioner Benjamin.
I have, um, a broad general question. Uh, I am a lover of parks and I've seen a bunch of community parks and something I just have been observing of and noticing is a lot of them are closed, like even during the, you know, the supposed like open times in the business time. And I was wondering, and these are including the New York City parks, not the private parks, they're the public ones. And I was wondering, what, just, I, just from my own, you know, knowledge, I was wondering why that is, is it like a staff, understaffed issue or is it a safety issue? Um, I, I have to say it's a bunch of them that are just, they seem very, um, not exclusive, but they're not open.
Are you speaking of community gardens or regular public parks?
Oh, community gardens.
Community gardens, okay. So, um, for community gardens that are in, owned by the city and in parks jurisdiction, um, they are licensed through the Parks Department and there are specific requirements on open hours. They also are required to have signage about open hours. It depends on the season, right? So the, the high season, April to October, the hours are more robust and that's generally the way gardens work. Um, if there are particular gardens that you have a concern about, um, uh, I'd be happy to follow up. Um, we do have, through our community garden, um, our Greensum Office, they have, uh, staff members that work throughout the city to assist and, uh, support community gardens so they can follow up to find out what the story is if for whatever reason they're not opening the hours as they should be. I also, Carlos Martinez, who is the head of the Greensum Program for the Parks Department, has also signed up. He could maybe, um, elaborate more, but I think the vast majority of our community gardens follow the open hours, but if there are some that are of concern, uh, I am happy to follow up so we can, we can reach out to the garden stewards, the reps for those gardens.
Thank you so much, I was just wondering, cause I've seen, so is it, um, like someone comes and they open the garden in the beginning and then it, they just come at the end when it's supposed to close and then they close it up? Or is it supposed to be someone, a staff member supposed to be in the garden all?
Carlos, yeah, so community gardens are very unique public open spaces. Basically, the community members basically have the keys to those spaces. It is not Parks Department staff that is opening and closing. Generally speaking, if a community member volunteer steward is in that community garden space, that is when generally the community garden is open for the public at large. Carlos can clarify, but that's typically how they work. Um, and then if there's no community volunteer steward in that space, that's when you'll find it closed and not open. It is a visual amenity, you know, it, it, you know, they, they are usually very lovely spaces. It is always nice for community members to see how active these spaces can be all from the blood, sweat, and tears and joy of community members. But, you know, it is not Parks Department staff that is opening and, uh, unlocking up.
You have unlocked an entire, uh, insight as to why I've been seeing them closed, I get it now.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Benjamin?
Hi, I have a couple of questions, um, on both, on each of the lots. Uh, the first one is, how did, what are the charges that accrued on Lot thirty-two? Is it water and sewer? Is it taxes? And how long were they in arrears?
I do not have that, Anna may have that.
Yeah, she does.
And she can review.
And the question is back to the lien so, and try to know the breakdown of what the tax lien that, uh, for which category.
Right, and the length of the arrears is.
All right, so for Lot thirty-two, the lien so minus thirty-three thousand dollars, that is the compose of the property tax, the, um, the fee charged by health department, DDC, and the sidewalk repair charges, health inspection, and so forth. So the lien aging year is starting from nineteen ninety-two all the way up to twenty, uh, twenty seventeen.
And was this originally a city-owned property that was sold to Quarry Kretona Homes? Or was this always a private property? I believe I heard that it was part of a housing development.
So, um, per the, um, Office of City Register worker, the deed for this property was changed in nineteen eighty-two from the city to this current owner.
And were there any restrictions on that title?
Uh, policy goal, I'm actually counsel to Kretona, uh, the Kretona Community Coalition, which has offered the larger lot for donation, but maybe, there's some things I might be able to help with though, I think you have my mini-computer. Um, so, um, the, both lots were originally part of the urban renewal plan, which has expired. So we had a lot of conversations about whether we could use that old plan as leverage and actually avoid seeing all of you, but it's very nice to be here, it's been a while. Um, so, um, here we are. Uh, Quarry Kretona Homes partnered with some nonprofits in the eighties to build like Nehemiah style homeownership housing, that's actually a lot of the housing stock in this neighborhood. And for some reason, Lot thirty-two got left behind. It's actually the same, same exact lot size as other parcels they developed.
But it wasn't a Q lot?
It wasn't a what?
It wasn't a Q lot, it wasn't Xed Out as open space.
No, but Lot thirty-three was. So Lot thirty-three came with a deed restriction, uh, from Quarry Kretona Homes to the Kretona Community Coalition, which was essentially the neighborhood association in the eighties there. Um, they took title, I'm gonna get this wrong, it was on the first slide, I think, ninety-two, thank you. Um, after they'd started using it as a community garden, but the deed was being held by Quarry Kretona Homes, and Quarry Kretona Homes actually went back to HPD and said, "We're building all these homes, this is a great open space amenity, we're not planning to own these homes, this is a homeownership project so we don't want to manage the open space, but there is this local community organization that's willing to take title." And so they did. Um, and so there is, it was Xed Out, thirty-three, not thirty-two.
Right.
Thirty-two actually became part of the garden much more recently. Thirty-three has been a garden for thirty years, thirty-two be- became part of the garden, I would say five or six years ago.
Till then, it was just an empty lot?
And it was awful, and actually the gardeners took care of the rats, they took care of the trash that had been accumulating in that lot. Um, it rema- it makes me think how long I've been working on this project, cause when I started working on this project, that was not part of the garden, but it has been now for half a decade.
And I can't speak for Lot thirty-two because that's privately owned, although the trust now owns the tax lien and may be selling it to the city or to the community.
A guy named Marin Hila. I actually went and watched the foreclosure auction just to see what would happen there. Uh, and he put down his ten percent deposit. So a man from Yonkers named Marin Hila, who I think had a proxy bidder whose name was Mario in the room, put down twenty-five thousand dollars, I'm looking at the referee's report. Um, though it hasn't closed, but I have no reason to think that someone would forfeit twenty-five thousand dollars. Right, so I assume they will come up with the rest of the money.
And on Lot, continuing on that lot, of the two hundred and, what was the minimum bid on Lot thirty-two since you were there?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just reading from the court papers. The upset price was one hundred and one thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. And the sale price was actually two twenty-five. So maybe the slide is a little wrong. Two hundred and twenty-five thousand. The upset was a hundred and one thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars.
And that's been accumulating, as far as you know, since nineteen ninety-two?
Yes, so the amount that's been accumulating is actually, let's see, the amount of final judgment of foreclosure was thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars and seventy-seven cents. And since we're having a lesson in the tax lien sale, the difference between the hundred and one and the thirty-eight, that's all inter- that's all fees that come from the process of the tax lien sale.
Emergency repairs or trucking out of rats?
No, 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 that's just a consequence of the city having sold the liens to the tax lien trust and all the fees and the legal fees and, uh, the publication fees and everything that gets piled on top of the amount that was actually due. So when you think about other folks who are subject to the lien sale, they are facing the same kind of situation where they might owe thirty-eight thousand dollars, but what they need to get their property back from the tax lien trust is actually a hundred thousand. So that's just, you know, that's not, that's not really Lot thirty-two's problem. Quarry Kretona Homes was actually dissolved by the State Department of State for not filing its corporate taxes, I'm gonna get the year on that wrong, sometime in the nineties. This has not been a real corporation in a long, long time.
So they built the homes and they sold the homes and this is the last little piece they have left that they actually own?
Or I don't know, I don't know if it really is the last one, but it is, yeah, it's a leftover.
I'm sorry I'm taking so long, I'm just trying to understand. And how much, would the city be paying the thirty-eight thousand dollars to acquire this site?
No.
Parks? Or would the city be paying the hundred and one thousand dollars?
No.
Or would the city be paying the two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars?
If my, if I were Milo Hilo, I would drive a hard bargain at this point cause it seems like this lot is important to all of us. So we don't know.
Right, having, however, having not closed, maybe this is a Department for Ms. Lau, a question, having not closed on this, can the trust cancel the sale?
No. No, that, no, the trust can't cancel the sale, but I can tell you, something that did happen with, in another property that I was involved with and then I think Anna can help with follow-up questions. I did work on a property where someone put down their ten percent and then they have thirty days to close and they just didn't show up with the rest of the money. And because of kind of the equities of that situation, it was an apartment building full of people, um, the, I convinced the tax lien trust attorney that they should cancel the sale. And because the bidder no longer had a right to purchase, cause he was too late with his money, they had the power to do that. But until, I guess, August fifteenth, Mister, I forgot his name already, Mister Marin Hila has the right to purchase this property.
So, um, to the questions about what if this, um, this closing cannot be done? And what would be next?
Or if we choose not to do?
Not, no, to, to, it's just kind of like, um, back out of this transaction, what next? So the servicer has to reschedule another public auction with the referee and have to do it again and to see if there's any, um, bidder so up to, uh, go through the process. So what if next time there's no one to, um, offer the bid? And then again, the trust will become the winning bidder. So that would take us to another round, talking about how the trust can transfer the, uh, title to the city, that I can tell you, um, the process. So in this situation, this city first initiates a transfer request to the trust manager, then the legal representatives of the trust, I mean, representatives of the city, trust, and the servicer will appear, uh, transfer agreement between the city and the trust for execution. And upon completion, the servicer schedules a closing with the referee and after the closing, the deed will issue and record. Generally, the process can be completed within the four to six weeks and no actual money is exchanged between the party. But keep that in mind, this process is when that's, um, the trust become the winning bidder of the, uh, at the, um, public auction.
Right, thank you. And last but not least, in the Greensum Program, are, is the garden group required to have insurance?
No, they are not. Not for community gardens in, owned by the city in parks jurisdiction and under our Greensum license. Again, Carlos can clarify, but that's my understanding. I know that's always a big question and concern for community gardeners.
And for the city.
You're right.
Okay, there's Carlos, yes, that's correct, yes. They can ha- choose to have insurance, but they're not required.
So the city becomes responsible for any trip and fall, anything that happens on the lot, anything related to it?
Correct, when we own property, we're responsible for the sidewalks, fronting our property.
When it's not us, when the garden owns the site?
Then whoever the owner of the property is, they're responsible for the sidewalks, correct.
Well, not just the sidewalks, but knowing certainly.
Oh, for the entire property, oh, yes, for the whole property, but you're asking for like trip and falls usually are on the sidewalk, so.
They can be, they-
Sure, they can be anywhere, yes, correct, yes.
So we're gonna take on for Lot thirty-three, the trip and fall?
Yes, correct, correct. We have hundreds of gardens, um, and we have lots of properties and, um-
So you also have gardens that are under lease? That Restoration took over a bunch of your gardens many years ago, of the lease Greensum Program?
Yeah, those were owned by the city, not Parks Department. They were owned by the City of New York and not in the Parks Department's jurisdiction. But yes, there were certain gardens out of the Attorney General settlement that ended up in the land trust, the garden land trust, correct, correct. But yes, there were certain gardens out of the Attorney General's settlement that ended up in the land trust, the garden land trust. Correct. Correct.
And, well, it's not relevant, so I'll stop. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, uh, and I'm gonna go to Commissioner Crimani next, but I will note that um, in the context of the city park system, obviously in the parks that are parks, the city is providing the insurance itself. Uh, in the case such a thing were to happen. And in, in the context of partnerships with parks, organizations, conservancies, et cetera, there's also fundamentally that level of protection because that is what enables anybody other than the Parks Department to provide any level of care for public spaces uh, without the fear of, um, you know, uh, catastrophe. So that is, uh, that's also a really important point. So.
Correct.
You know, I think that's a rather, rather common. So yes, Commissioner Crimani.
Finally, fast. Um, I will say that, um, in nineteen ninety-seven, I was the first Brooklyn outreach coordinator for partnerships for parks when it first existed. So I'm a huge fan of gardens and community gardens and, and stewardship of them. So my basic question is, if the acquisition of this land happens, um, the, I would assume that the community garden and residents that you showed and the partnerships and the relationships that those would continue, be sustained. And it is certainly the intention of the community to continue to be here, steward the land. And this is, this is something they feel very strongly about.
Absolutely. Um, we, um, with our green thumb office, we have had many meetings, calls, conversations. They are fully clear on, on how we license community gardens, what all the protocols are. We feel very, very confident that how they are conducting operations now is completely aligned. So I, we have no concerns over that and the gardeners are fully on board, um, with, with this transfer to the city in terms of ownership. Not much else will really truly change in terms of the garden activities. We hope to be able to support them better. I will say that Councilmember Felice, in the recently adopted budget, did provide funding so we can improve the garden. The not-for-profit does not have the resources. We have funding to improve the sidewalks, provide irrigation to the garden to be able to help and support those gardeners. This is what we do at times for many of the gardens across the city. Sometimes electeds give specific support, um, bes- uh, to assist the gardens so they can do what they do best and steward those garden spaces.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sorio?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation and for engaging with all of our questions. Um, also, thank you for the, the, the materials. Everything has been really, really, um, comprehensive. Thank you. My, I have two quick questions. One question is, so one eighty-second looks like a, like a corridor that can accommodate development. The, the, the Lot thirty-three is still so owned R seven and will remain so owned R seven. And so building on Commissioner Carmani's question, I was wondering if you can help me understand sort of like beyond eh, expanding the services that you can provide to the garden as it becomes city property. Uh, what, how can we secure this as a garden in perpetuity? In other terms, you know, eh, eh, and, and maybe, you know, the fact that you are eh, acquiring the property for the purposes of the green thumb eh, program is, is what I'm, uh, what I'm asking. But I'm wondering if, if there's any formalization that this should remain a garden or whether there's any eh, options or scenarios in which the city may dispose or redevelop in the future. Um, so that's the first question. The, the second part of the question is, um, I have a more of a, sort of like contextual question, which is, I was wondering if, if you know, or if you can let us know, what is the, the, the plan for block, eh, Lot thirty-nine and one and, and across the street on block thirty, ninety-nine, which is also vacant, city-owned land, I think owned by the Department of Education. But I was wondering if you, if you know that. Those are the two questions. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Um, so in terms of the preservation and, um, of, for the garden, we are going through this ULR process for the city to acquire for a specific purpose. So that's very clear. Um, also, in twenty-ten, there were specific rules of the City of New York that were established for community gardens falling under Title, um, fifty-six for the Parks Department. It calls for the Parks Department to preserve gardens. Our licenses, uh, actually, the, the term of the licenses have expanded over the years basically because of the community garden community. They're now ten years. As long as the community garden is in good standing, they are renewed automatically. We don't expect any change to this. There's a protocol. Should that change course, we are charged with finding other community garden stewards for that property. If the city was ever wanted to dispose of that property, that would be a community elected's conversation and it would require ULR. So there would have to be, there are protocols before the city disposes of property. Public open space is very, um, uh, important for community members. And, um, so eh, we, I feel like there's enough protections. Eh, we think it's in the best interest for this community garden to be under city ownership in Parks jurisdiction. That's why we've been working with the, the organization, the owners, to realize that. Um, but we think there's enough protections, um, afforded to this garden and it's in their interest that it fallen, you know, be in our portfolio of gardens. On the, on the vacant lots across the street, um, I know that was a question raised earlier this week. Uh, yes, Department of Education, we have not spoken to them. Um, we do have some, uh, relation between our green thumb office and Department of Education. You know, gardens are very great teaching tools. They could already be, um, some of those community schools that actually participate in activities. Or, you know, our green thumb office is always willing and able to support, but ultimately it would be up to Department of Education. Not sure what plans they might have a foot for those vacant spaces, but we can certainly check with them, um, and see.
Thanks on both questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time and also for the seminar on tax liens too. We appreciate it. Uh, and, uh, thank you.
Thank you so much.
I do not see, uh, anybody else wishing to testify on this, uh, item, Madam Secretary, if that is correct. Um, I'm just gonna do a final last call here. Then I will close the hearing on calendar number twenty-five and we will move item to, onto the next item, uh, for today.
Borough of Queens, calendar numbers twenty-six and twenty-seven, Twenty-first Street rezoning, CD one, calendar number twenty-six, C two-three-zero-two-five-zero Z M Q. Calendar number twenty-seven, N two-three-zero-two-five-one Z R Q. Public hearing in the matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning Twenty-first Street rezoning.
Great. Thank you very much. And, uh, for this one, I see Jacqueline Scarnici. Sorry.
Just matter for the record?
Commissioner Ramchand is recused on this one. Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Morning Commissioners, Jacqueline Scarnici of Acreman LLP, on behalf of Astoria Park Warehouse, uh, the applicant for the Twenty-first Street rezoning, which will transform two vacant lots within this vibrant Twenty-first Street corridor in Astoria um, and Twenty-fourth Avenue into two new mixed-use developments with permanently affordable housing and ground floor retail space. The rezoning area has two development sites, one located on Twenty-first Street, the former Ricardo's by the Bridge site, and then, um, the former parking lot for Ricardo's by the Bridge, which is located on Twenty-fourth Avenue. This is a line use map showing the surrounding areas, um, and context for the rezoning. Just north of the site is the, um, Astoria Park, which is a sixty-acre, um, park that has both passive and active recreation areas. It is a very transit-rich area with multiple bus lines along both Twenty-first Street and Twenty-fourth Avenue. It's about an eight-block walk to the NW station. And, um, it is predominantly residential within the neighborhood. There are commercial uses along Twenty-first Street currently. Um, just across the street was a rezoning back in two thousand eight, which pr- uh, mapped the R seven A directly across the, uh, street from the site. Um, and then just to show you the existing conditions, this is the Ricardo's site. And this is the parking lot site, which is on, along Twenty-fourth Avenue. Uh, here is the proposed rezoning actions. So it, the existing zoning is R five B and R five D C one-three. And we're proposing a R six A C one-four, uh, over the entirety of the rezoning area, which spans from, uh, tw- the area mid-block on Twenty-first Street between, uh, and Twenty-fourth Avenue and goes all the way the length of the block to Twenty-third Terrace. Eh, in addition to the zoning map amendment, we are also asking for a zoning text amendment to map MIH for o- options one and two over the project area. Here is an illustrative rendering of Development Site One. Um, this overall, both sites will yield ninety-two dwelling units. This Development Site One will have fifty-four with, uh, twenty-three to twenty-eight permanently, sorry, sixteen permanently affordable housing units just on this site. And then, uh, tw- twenty-three accessory parking spaces, ground floor commercial space, about sixty-five hundred square feet. And then this is the illustrative rendering for Development Site Two, which is the former parking lot. Will have thirty-five thousand square feet, uh, thirty dwelling units and, um, will have twelve permanently affordable units. And with that, any questions?
Great. Thank you very much. Let me see if there are questions for you. Mr. Vice Chairman?
Uh, Ms. Scarnici?
Yes.
Do you know the, uh, AMI, uh, average median income for, uh, this area?
Uh, it's about seventy-five thousand dollars for a family of four.
Family of four. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Um, and I will note that I do not see members of the public wishing to testify on this item. So I will close the hearing on calendar number twenty-six and twenty-seven and let us move on to the next.
Borough of Manhattan, calendar number twenty-eight, Malcolm Shabazz Harlem Plaza, CD ten, C two-four-zero-three-zero-one H A M. Public hearing in the matter of an application for UDAP designation, project approval, and disposition of city-owned property concerning Malcolm Shabazz Harlem Plaza.
Great. Uh, thank you very much. And, um, on behalf of the applicant team, I see, uh, forgive me if I'm, if I do damage any of your names, but Peter Proceda, Agata Naglica, Melissa Auton, Tariq, Shahid, and Mujeeb Manan.
Correct.
Okay, great. Welcome.
All right. So, good morning Commissioners. My name is Agata Niklitska. I'm a Manhattan Borough Planner at HPD and I'm joined here by my HPD colleagues and our development partners who will introduce themselves during their presentation or later on in the Q and A. And we're, we're, they're working with us on the Malcolm Shabazz Harlem Plaza project and this includes Proceda and the Malcolm Shabazz Development Corporation. And as part of the ULR process, which started with the certification of this application on April fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four, we're excited to be here today presenting the Malcolm Shabazz Harlem Plaza application, which will bring much-needed affordable housing and an improved ground floor community facility space to the Harlem neighborhood. And the Malcolm Shabazz Harlem Plaza project is located at fifty-two West one-hundred-sixteenth Street on four city-owned lots located on block fifteen ninety-nine in Manhattan CB ten. And briefly, the proposed development will be a new as-of-right nine-story building containing approximately a hundred nine affordable housing units and one super's unit. It will include ground floor space for a new and improved Malcolm Shabazz Harlem Market. To facilitate the project, HPD is proposing the following land use action, a UDAP designation and UDAP approval, and the disposition of the development site. And here we have a more overhead view. For more context of the location, the project is, I mean, the site is currently utilized as an outdoor vendor's market. And now I'll turn it over to Proceda from the development company, Peter from Proceda, to speak in more detail about the proposed development.
Thank you. Uh, thanks, Agata. Uh, Chair Commissioners, pleasure to be in front of you today. My name is Peter Proceda. I'm with Proceda Development and Proceda Construction. Proceda's a fourth-generation family-owned business. We've been located in the Bronx since the mid nineteen seventies, focused almost exclusively on the construction and development of affordable housing across the city. Um, and on this development, we're part- partnered with Malcolm Shabazz Development Corp., um, which is a, the development branch of the Malcolm Shabazz Mosque. The mosque has been in the neighborhood for a long time and has been operating the market since nineteen ninety-five when they helped Mayor Giuliani move the vendors from one-twenty-fifth down to the current market site. The proposed development is a hundred and nine units, a hundred percent affordable under the HPD ELLA program. Uh, the units will be affordable, the households earning from thirty percent of AMI up to eighty percent of AMI. And the entirety of the ground floor, less, uh, circulation and lobby space for the residential units above, will be brought, uh, will be for bringing the vendors back to the site once the construction is complete. The building received a Building of Excellence Award from NYSERDA a couple of months ago uh, and is being designed to passive house standards. Uh, amenities for the residence will include laundry in both towers of the building. Uh, there is a nine-story building fronting on one-sixteenth, as well as one, fronting on one-fifteenth, and a shared resident-only eme- uh, rooftop above the market in between the two towers. Each tower has its own laundry room, bike room, uh, and community room. Uh, here is a site plan where you can see the two towers and the landscaped terrace in between. Uh, and here is a breakdown of AMIs and unit sizes. I'll note that HPD requirements, uh, ask for thirty percent two bedrooms and above. We are actually at, uh, thirty-six percent, so we're significantly beating that requirement, uh, on our current distribution. Right now, uh, as you guys are well aware, City of Yes is going through. Um, based upon an assumed passing of City of Yes, we could as of right increase the unit count from the a hundred and nine to a hundred and twenty-three by adding one story to each building, which would make us ten and ten on, on one-fifteenth and one-sixteenth. Um, as I mentioned earlier, the Malcolm Shabazz Market and the Malcolm Shabazz Business Incubator Program were founded in nineteen ninety-four. Uh, at that time, there were thousands of vendors, uh, on the streets, especially on one-twenty-fifth. Uh, MSDC has been working to incubate businesses and has launched forty Birkenmorder businesses across the city from the market. We've been working in conjunction with the Shabazz team since twenty-sixteen and were granted a sole source in twenty-eighteen. We've met with CB ten, uh, going back to two thousand and nineteen. Got waylaid a little bit by COVID and, and certified for ULR, uh, earlier this year and approved by the Community Board and the Borough President, uh, in April and June, I think. The existing market has been a staple of the community. Uh, currently, there are fifty-seven booths operated by forty-seven vendors. This, uh, to your right, you'll see a proposed, uh, floor plan for the, the ground floor of the building, which has ten food vendor stalls, forty-eight, uh, dry goods vendor stalls, uh, for a total of, or sorry, eleven food vendors and forty-eight, uh, so a total of sixty stalls. Um, the new market will incorporate food, which we think is not only, uh, gonna bring more vitality to the market and will also eh, increase length of time spent and hopefully increase business for the existing vendors, as well as give the, uh, individuals who are interested in entrepreneurship surrounding food-based businesses a lower cost barrier to entry, um, to operate, uh, small businesses. Uh, the, our big challenge is on this development is relocating the vendors. Um, we, the city owns a temporary lot, uh, just down the block at, at sixty-eight West one-sixteenth Street, which you can see in orange to the right of the, the page, which is just next to Malcolm X. We think we can fit about thirty-six vendors using PODS storage system. It would be a setup similar to what you would see during, uh, like a Christmas market that's done at Bryant Park or, you know, uh, Union Square. Uh, we'd have them set up for the period of construction, which would be about two years, and we would bring them back. The exist, the, uh, vendors who were unable to fit on that site, we're gonna secure a local retail space approximately twelve months out from a construction loan closing, uh, and ensure that they're built out and set up in a good, uh, location for them to succeed. Uh, right now, I walked the block a couple of weeks ago, there were five or six vacant retail, uh, spaces that we thought we could secure. In addition, the building to the right of the temporary space, which is vacant in the picture that you see and is boarded up, is currently under construction in conjunction with HPD and a developer who we know. So we're trying to see if the timing will work out that we can occupy their ground floor retail space so everything would be just in one space. And this is an interior rendering of the market, um, which is highly artistic. But open it up for questions from, from here.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, um, before I go to Vice Chair Knuckles, let me just ask a couple of. Before I go to Vice Chair Knuckles, let me just ask a couple of quick ones here. The twelve vendors who will be relocated to retail storefronts somewhere in Central Harlem, you said you have explored the area, you see some options, but that space is, at this moment, not known, but you see opportunities, is that what you're saying?
Yes, we don't know exactly where it will be. There are a number of vacant retail spaces. You know, as this is an affordable job, affordable housing development, these are budgeted costs. We think it's going to take about twelve months to complete the improvements needed, both on the outdoor temporary lot at Sixty-eight, which is a city-owned property, as well as to secure a lease and improve any retail space. So we're working with the city to get a better handle on when they think our financial closing will happen. Once we're through E L E R, I think we'll have a more clear picture as to when that will happen. And at that point, you know, we'll start working with local brokers and try and secure a space, but.
And the space will be secured before the...
Yes, we will not, a condition to closing, I think, is going to be an ability to move the vendors, and, you know, we're not going to put ourselves in a spot where we're not ready to move the vendors the day we close, because we need to get their construction quickly.
Good. And last for me, you noted that all vendors would be offered the right to return, but also with a nominal increase in fee. Can you just give us a sense of how nominal is nominal?
Well, good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Thank you very much. Just to let you know that our community is very excited about the market. My name is Tariq Shaheed. I've been managing the market for the last thirty years, since its inception in nineteen ninety-four. And we've only had two increases in the entire time, sixteen dollars per day and twenty dollars per day in the thirty years we've been there. And of course, you know, our idea from sixteen to twenty, you know, if you can't make sixteen dollars a day, then maybe we should be doing another business. But, and so we fill a nominal amount, because our concern is really the vendors. You know, we take great interest in the vendors. They've been with us all this time. I know every single one of them. I know how long they've been there, what products they sell, what country they're from. So our interest is really the vendors, making sure that all of them can come back, those that want to come back, and we're sure all of them do. And so we haven't come to a number yet. We don't know the expense once we're there, but we do believe it's going to be a very nominal amount, I mean, no more than a difference than what we've done previously. But we can't say determinate, this is the number. But I can assure you, our interest is making sure that this incubator program remains successful. And the other, the other people that we're talking about, the eleven, that's eleven, those are tailors. And the reason why, their business is not based on tourism. They're rooted in the community, people know them, so they come to get their things made in the community zone, that's the difference.
Thank you. Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yeah. Well, you partially answered my question. As it relates to the vendors, do they have, because you say it's a per diem rate of pay, so do they have leases or permits? What is the status of their presence there?
They have, they have at least a license agreement. We don't have rent, per se. It's almost just as if, because they're pursuant to their membership in this incubator program. Therefore, they pay a fee, and they pay at the end of the week. And it's no more than just like if you go to a hotel. If you're in the hotel and you don't pay, you know, they lock you out of the hotel. So, and this way, we don't get bogged down with people who come in and don't pay, and it becomes a real problem in courts, and you're there for months and months, people are not paying, but you're still incurring the expenses. And this has worked for us for the last thirty years. And the other thing about it is that anybody who fails to pay us, this is one of the full thing about what Imam Pasha has done, is that it's not held against your credit rating if you don't make it. And we bring you back, and maybe we change your product. Maybe you got the wrong product, and maybe, you know, too many people have the same product. So we do variances to make sure that it's a successful market. We mentioned that there are forty vendors who were previously vendors in the market. There's more than that. They're now in stores all through Harlem, own their own stores, because of what we've been able to do in terms of teaching them inventory, sales, taxes, how to promote your business, et cetera.
So for a vendor who seeks to get a space there, what is the process for that?
Well, number one, first of all, what we do is, we usually, if they don't, initially, we had a, English has a second language, teach them about taxes, teach them about inventory, how to sell your product, and to make sure that they understand that process. And also that everything we have is legal, there's no bootleg, anything, everything has to be legal according to the City of New York and the State of New York. So, and then what they do, the certification, they tell them, then they meet with myself and Dr. Moran, who's here, they usually meet with us. We talk to them about their product and where they're coming from, where the product comes from, how they get the product, so that we're clear about the products that are being sold. And then we make a determination, and we very rarely turn anybody down. Right now, we turn everybody down because we have no more spaces, and nobody moves in the summertime, ever.
So let me just ask Mr. Proceda, with regard to the build-out, what level will that be?
In terms of the market?
The market, yeah.
The market's going to be finished. The turnkey facility upon completion. We're budgeting to build out the residential and the market, you know, so that everybody that walks in is proud of it the day that it opens, and it's not a white box or anything of that nature.
Okay. So is that space now, that would be owned by the developers going forward?
We're still working through all the legal logistics of it, but yeah, it would be owned by the joint venture and subject to the, all the regulatory agreements and everything else that will be put in place by the city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Mr. Rosario?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for the presentation and congratulations on your recent designation. I think it's, I just wanted to take a minute to underscore the importance of hearing that this is going to be a passive house project. You are demonstrating that it's possible that a building of this, at this scale, can actually achieve that. And so I just wanted to underscore that. On that regard, since this is a recent, like, upgrade, or let's say, stage in what you had already announced, it was going to be an interesting combination of different strategies, I was wondering if you can share with us in writing, kind of like the plan to achieve that, like, what are the actual technical...
In terms, oh, the passive house specs? Yeah, we can do that. I'm not necessarily equipped to do that.
Yes, no, thank you, thank you. Yeah, in particular, I'm really interested in hearing more about the solar component.
Yep.
Whether, for example, you're going to have energy storage, where would that be? What's going to be the capacity? I am very interested in that. The other component has to do with the ground floor specifically. During the initial discussion that we had, there were some questions about ventilation for the food vendors, given sort of like the proportions of the space. I was wondering if you can walk us a little bit through, how are you going to, how will the HVAC system be designed to accommodate that? And in the midst of there, I have some questions about the vendors, but those are the questions about the design.
I can actually answer the HVAC question. So if you see the little white box to the right of the screen?
Yeah.
That's actually a mechanical ventilation pit. So there's going to be a mezzanine above the food vendors. So the, you know, the market dry goods vendors who are on the left of the page are going to have a higher ceiling. I think it's somewhere around fifteen to seventeen feet. The food vendors are going to be around ten or twelve. That drop enables us to put all of the mechanical equipment in that void and have some office space and storage space in the mezzanine, which is about, I think it's like seven or eight feet clear. And so that, that will be open air with a grate on top, so it'll vent up there. The, most of the HVAC equipment is going to be all electric because it's passive house, so we're not worried about gas fumes. The cooking, we do have to figure out. I know we've got some black duck. We're trying to figure out if we can deal with the distance between windows and vent it in that space, or if we need to run it all the way out.
Thank you. I would appreciate, you know, as...
Yeah, we can get you a written response on that.
Thank you. On that, too, will there be any natural light?
Yeah, so the little boxes, as shown, are actually skylights, and we're working on the design of those skylights. As you can see in this image, they're larger boxes, and that corresponds to this rendering, where we're trying to get natural light all the way through the corridor, which will be open from One Sixteenth to One Fifteenth.
Okay, perfect, thank you. The other question that I have is associated with the, both the design process, how have the vendors involved in terms of the relocation strategy, which is in progress or under design right now, but also the design of the space? Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Yeah, so the vendors have been engaged by M S D C from the beginning. We also brought on a third-party consultant to survey the vendors, ask them questions about what they have, what they want, what they need. And, you know, we've been in pretty constant communication about the plan and the process. We're still working on all of the details for the interior design of the space. As I mentioned earlier, this is an artistic rendering that is subject to change, so we're trying to figure all that out and want to engage more with the vendors as we, you know, define what the, their individualized spaces are going to look like in terms of the storage, the lockability, you know, is it roll downs, you know, do you have the ability to hang stuff? How are you storing things? That's the type of stuff that we really need to dig in with the vendors on. But right now, the vendors have eight-by-eight lockable spaces. We intend to give them the same once they return, so that's kind of the plan.
Thank you. And have you begun thinking, how will you be assigning them, like, how that's going to work?
Well, you know, we won't know definitively until we have it structured out, but we're going to try and bring everybody back to the same space. For example, we have from one to forty-seven spaces, with sixty, fifty-seven altogether. So we'll put them in the number they were in, where it's feasible. And some people, you know, we have to have three booths. No one will have three booths. Maximum you'll have is two. And we had about four vendors who have three spaces, so they know they're going to have to downsize to a degree.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you very much. We don't have any further questions for you. Always thank you for being with us today.
Thank you.
Okay, I also do not see members of the public wishing to be heard on this item, so I'll close the hearing on calendar twenty-eight and move on to the next item of the day.
Borough of Manhattan, calendar number twenty-nine, three four three, West Forty-Seven Street, demolition special permit, C D four, C two four zero two four four, Z S M. Public hearing in the matter of an application for a special permit concerning three four three, West Forty-Seven Street, demolition special permit.
Great. And on this, I'm happy to welcome Richard Bass. You have three minutes.
Hi, good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair Commissioners. I'm Richard Bass. I'm also with Ackerman. This is a special permit application to facilitate the restoration of an existing four-story building and the addition of three additional stories. This facade treatment was approved by the Community Board. The vision you saw on Monday was different. Let's see if I do this right. The site's on the north side of Forty-Seven Street. There's a building next to it on the right, and a park on the left. There's the tax map, there's the zoning map. I'm going through this rather quickly. Here's the existing condition. The backstory of this project is the applicant nor his engineer wanted to demolish square footage. The rear wall of the existing vacant four-story building was in disrepair. He thought that by removing it, he could then stabilize the building. He received two permits from the Department of Buildings. He complied with all the permitting process with Parks Department and with the neighboring building. Parks issued, the Department of Buildings issued the permits. He demolished the fourth floor by doing, the rear wall of the fourth floor by doing so, he moved twenty-five percent of the square footage of the building, which violated the special Clinton district regulations. This special permit was written in nineteen seventy-three. We're the first applicant in fifty-one years to apply under this criteria. D O B shouldn't have issued the permit. The engineer shouldn't have asked for the permit. Once the Community Board realized that this work was being done, D O B revoked the permit and issued a stop-work order. So nothing has happened, and the only way to cure this situation is by you all granting the special permit. The Community Board has been very supportive. They voted thirty-nine in favor. They expedited their review. The Borough President approved it, expedited his review. Your department expedited your review, so we could get back to D O B and fix this problem. I know there were some questions, I'd be from Monday, be more than happy to address them, but that's basically the story. By granting this special permit, we can restore the fourth floor, rear wall, expand the building. It will be zoning compliant in terms of lot coverage and height. End of story. It's a rather simple application, but kind of complicated at the same time.
Okay, thank you very much. Let me see if there are questions for you on this one. Okay, well, you may be clear here for, at least for the moment. Thank you. We appreciate your being here with us, and we'll, I think we have a couple others who want to be heard today, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Bass. Okay, let's, let me call up Jesse Bowden, and to be followed by Gene Orjon Daniel Nolan, both from Community Board Four, and both on Zoom. So let's start with Mr. Bowden.
Hi, does anybody hear me?
We can.
Great. It's weird to be on the other end of the testimony process, so I appreciate everybody's patience. My name is Jesse Bowden. I'm the District Manager from Manhattan Community Board Four. Since two twenty twenty-one, M C B Four was aware, has been aware of the erroneous demolition of this residential building. Since that time, the site was routinely left unsecure and was open to the elements. There were squatters, there were fires. It was an unsafe situation for both Ramona Ponte Public Park and the neighboring residential buildings that abutted the site. In two thousand and twenty-two, M C B Four began collaborating with the applicant and Department of Buildings to find a pathway forward to the site. After many meetings and much review, it became clear the only remedy to cure the improper demolition was through the special permit process. M C B Four supports this application because it will close the long cycle of improper demolition at the site, resolve the serious public safety issues, and begin repairing the damage to the adjacent buildings. M C B Four's support is conditioned on the applicant agreeing to a number of commitments and providing a letter confirming those commitments. The majority of these commitments have been made, have been done, and are on schedule to be done. M C B Four will continue to work with the applicant to ensure they fulfill their commitments and move the project forward to benefit both the owner and the Hell's Kitchen neighborhood. I do want to be clear that M C B Four considers this a bittersweet success. As highlighted in their letter, over the last decade, the community has witnessed more and more illegal and erroneously permitted demolition of residential buildings. The members offered solutions to the Department of City Planning that would bring clarity to ambiguous portions of the zoning resolutions. The members have offered programmatic solutions to the Department of Building that would have flagged, that would flag demo permits earlier, and the members have even gotten property owners to agree to include affordable housing as pathways forward, but to, but no major changes have been done. We are only advisory, and it is time for the Department of City Planning, H P D, and Department of Buildings to do something about this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bowden. Good to see you. Okay, let's move on to Mr. Nolan.
I believe J D Nolan is just here, in case there are any questions. He's the co-chair of the committee, so he was just here.
Okay, okay, great, terrific. Thank you, Jesse, appreciate that. Okay, I do not see questions, so thank you. And I do not see others wishing to be heard today on three forty-three West Forty-Seven Street in this special permit application, so we'll close the hearing here, and we will move on, and maybe even move back here, to the One Hundred Thirty-Fifth Street rezoning. And I do not see members of the public wishing to be heard on this one, Madam Secretary, unless I am, I'm going to reload here, just to make sure.
You are correct, Chair. I do not see any members of the public wishing to testify at the moment for this item.
Okay, thank you for that. So with that, I will close the hearing on calendars number thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-three, and I will open the hearing on calendar number thirty-four, and I'm going to go back to you, Madam Secretary, and let's see if we can call that item.
Borough of Brooklyn, calendar number thirty-four, Alafia Street Mapping, C D five, C two four zero zero eight two, M M K. Public hearing in the matter of applications for City Map Amendment concerning Alafia Street D Map, Mapping.
Great, and let's welcome the team up here. Great. And let's welcome the, the team up here. And I'm going to ask them to introduce themselves on account of my computer having frozen. Ah ha, here we go. Daniel Burzac, Jessica Yoon, Lee Brathwaite, Randall Torre, and Deana Farulo. Did I get you all? Great. Welcome. Go ahead and introduce yourself, and you can get started whenever you're ready. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Lee Brathwaite. I'm with Apex Building Group. I'm one of the developer partners on the project. I have my colleague Jessica Yoo and Randall Torre, Jessica from L and M, and Randall from Riseborough. One of our other developer partners is S U S, Services for the Under-served. They don't have represented with us today. But then you mentioned, we also have our engineering partners from V H B, Deana and Dan. So, so our project site is one of the original Vital Brooklyn sites that was issued an R F P in two thousand and eighteen. Our team was awarded the project in two thousand and twenty. The development site is in East New York, Brooklyn, is next to or across the street from the Gateway Center and across from the Shirley Chisholm State It's about twenty-seven acres of property. And we were able to secure the project by an R F P. We then engaged with the community and with a consultant, Dr. Maria Del Angoria, where we renamed the site Alafia, which is a West African term meaning health and wellness. It's used as a greeting most times to wish you well, health and wellness, which fits with the concept of our site, where our site is consistent with a place where residents can engage in healthy living, eating, and engaging with other folks in the community, as well as facilitate exercise and engagement in the outdoors. As you can see, it has twenty-four-hundred, well, over the six-year term of our build, we expect to have twenty-four-hundred to twenty-six-hundred units of all affordable housing, up to eighty percent A M I, ranging from thirty percent to eighty percent A M I. The services that will be provided to the various residents will be provided by Services for the Under-served, as well as Riseborough, and any other service provider that will be needed, depending upon what's required in the site. There are a number of other facilities that will be provided in the, in the community. Fifty thousand square feet of commercial and community space will be available, twenty thousand square feet of food production space. And it's going to be built using sustainable and resilient design concepts. We are currently in phase one of the project, and there are some additional concepts that are being built in the, in the project. For example, Brookdale Medical Center is going to have a outpatient facility in the project. There's going to be a four-acre plaza and park fitness loop, so that not only can the residents from the community have access, but everybody from the local community will have access to those services as well. And there's going to be a food production, as well as a one-acre urban farm towards the south end of the project. And as you can see on this chart, we are identifying the locations of the three future streets, which we're here to talk about, to request for them to be made public. And so with that, I will turn it over to my colleague Jessica, who will take you through more of our requests.
Thank you, Lee. So as we mentioned, our project, Alafia, is located in the Spring Creek section of East New York, which has seen quite a lot of development, a lot of H P D-led projects, probably over the last thirty-plus years. I think the street network in this area of East New York has been developing over those decades. In our, you know, research as we were putting the mapping application together, you know, we looked at several past street mappings, establishing a lot of the new streets that were developed in connection with the Gateway Estates. So our action, or our proposed action here today is a city map amendment to add three new streets to the city map. These three new streets are being built as part of our new development, Alafia, breaking up that super block that was, you know, owned by the state of New York and run as institutional housing for a long time, and kind of connecting it back with the grid that has been evolving here. We were certified for U L R in April and have been active at presenting and holding public hearings at Community Board Five with the Brooklyn Borough President's Office, and now here with the City Planning Commission today. The, sorry, the proposed action, you know, ultimately is, I think, relatively simple. It's adding three streets that we've been in close communication with kind of D O T and other city agencies about. Abule Avenue kind of runs east to west on the north end of the site. Vital Avenue, it's running east to west on the south end of the site. And Field Drive, which is a small street connecting existing Seaview Avenue to our new Vital Avenue, establishing the meets and bounds of these, the grades of these streets, and then, you know, making them part of the city map as public right-of-way. I'll turn it over to our engineer, Dan, with some more details.
Thank you, Jessica. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I just turned it off, didn't I? Here we are. So we've developed an alteration map in accordance with U L R procedures. These, this alteration map, part of this, which is seen on the screen here, is consistent with the schematic geometric design approval, which we've received from New York City D O T for these three new streets. Those were received in two thousand and twenty-two. And as part of the approval for those three streets, we were able to establish with D O T the locations of these streets, the right-of-way widths, locations of the curb lines, the width of the roadbeds, the width of the sidewalks, and establish an understanding of the circulation for vehicles and pedestrians on these streets. And I will say also that these streets, again, are consistent with what was analyzed as part of the project E I S, and also are, is consistent with the amen and drainage plan that is in place for this project. And with that, I will kick it back over to Jessica.
Those are the details of our street mapping. And we just kind of wanted to reiterate or share with you that a lot of the rationale for wanting to map these as public streets is just so that critical public infrastructure, not just the streets, but the sewers, water mains underneath them, you know, that we've been in coordination with D E P about, can be publicly owned and properly maintained in perpetuity, so that this area of East New York has, you know, quality access services as the rest of, as the rest of the city, and have these be true public streets. I think we'll open it up for any questions.
Great. Thank you. Let me just start with one. Thank you for this. Abule Avenue specifically. It looks, based on the presentation, that it is not aligned with Schroders Avenue. And I assume that that is a deliberate act for any number of reasons. But I wanted to see if you could lay that out for us. And also, then my follow-up will be, what is the anticipated route for traffic there? Would you be able to go from Schroders Avenue to Abule Avenue? I suspect not, but I just want to hear what, what the thought is here.
Sure. And maybe this visual helps. It's Abule Avenue. It's broken up into kind of two. But the topmost image on the left side is its intersection with Erskine Street. Unfortunately, Schroders Avenue isn't shown, but it would be just to the north of that. And so it is not, it is not a connected intersection or street. Some of what caused this is, you know, our team has been working on this parcel, which we acquired from the New York State Urban Development Corporation, E S D, at the end of two thousand and twenty-one. And so the street that we were establishing had to kind of be within, you know, the tax lot boundary of the land that we acquired. A private landowner, you know, owns the site just north of us. They have developed, like, honestly, a very beautiful pedestrian plaza and walkway, and kind of had no intent to, you know, to make that a public street. So this is kind of a regular intersection. You can kind of see the, the, I don't know, the signage or the proposed plan, but you will not be able to go directly, you know, from Abule Avenue to Schroders across Erskine. It will be, I think, a right turn only off of Abule, up Erskine, a right turn only onto Abule Avenue, and the intersection will never line up, unfortunately.
Well, I'm not, I don't know if that's necessarily a bad, a bad thing here. But, but I just wanted to make sure I understood it correctly. Go ahead.
Just to add, you know, we are very cognizant of potentially, you know, what drivers would want to do. And for that reason, we did really closely coordinate with D O T overall, but particularly on this intersection. So in Erskine, there is a proposed concrete median, really a pet refuge island. But that's also to prohibit any illegal turns. That would make it unsafe.
Yeah, we, we have seen in other areas of the city where if the, if the desire of a driver is to go in a certain direction, there's lots of things that they might tend to do. So that level of protection there, I think, is, is quite important. Can I, just one, one follow-up there. This site, the development that we're talking about here, is the northern boundary the future Abule Avenue?
Yes.
Okay. Got it. And the, the other development that you were talking about is on the north side of the future Abule Avenue?
Yes.
Okay. Got it. Thank you. Let me go to Commissioner Benjamin.
I had a question on Monday that you can answer, which is just, what is the agreement to make sure the streets are completely finished prior to a T C O being issued or occupancy of any part of the development?
So the way it was done with E S D is there's a restrictive declaration recorded on the whole site. It requires us to, one, pursue this mapping to try to make these streets public. And in the meantime, any street that's being built, to ensure that, you know, for building ahead of the mapping, that it's in coordination with D O T and to their standards, are the first kind of new buildings that will be coming online are fronting Erskine Street. So, you know, the large one has frontage on an existing street. Our smaller building on Twenty Vital Avenue does depend on kind of the completion of the street. So we are in process right now. We've gotten final acceptance from D E P, and I think are working on the other agency sign-offs for the completed section of street segment. That is how, you know, vehicles can access, you know, the first of our new buildings that rely on the street, and how that, the first of our new buildings that rely on the street will drain its sanitary sewer line into the city system.
And the third street, Alufia?
Oh, Abule. That has not started construction. We are hoping to, to start that soon.
And is there a requirement that those streets, particularly first, be in place prior to any occupancy of the residential?
Not prior to occupancy, but prior to obtaining an E S D completion certificate under our restrictive declaration.
And I'm unfamiliar with any restrictions that might be placed on you as the developer by E S D C in the completion documents. Could you just give me a quick?
Sure. I think we have some completion guarantees. So from kind of a financial, like, incentive or penalty side of things. And I guess E S D aside, you know, the buildings, you know, would only be able to T C O if they have all their essential services. So, you know, if they are draining sewage into an already mapped existing public street, it's no issue. But for ones that are connecting to a street that we're building, you know, its T C O will be reliant on getting kind of its D E P approval, so that it can, you know, connect to the sanitary system. So I think that control is in place as well. That prior to T C O, that these are, you know, occupiable, and that the street and the sewers underneath are verified to have been built properly for the connection.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Osorio?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation and for the materials. I have two sets of questions. The first question has to do with asking a little bit about your response to the recommendations made by the Brooklyn Borough President in terms of, number one, decoupling parking from rent?
Mm-hmm.
And the second one, like, providing as much flexibility so that underutilized residential parking can be rented to non-residents? I was wondering if you can comment a little bit on this.
Sure. So the, we have quite a lot of off-street parking planned in this development. I think currently, the plan includes, I think, seven hundred and ninety off-street parking spaces. The, right now, only one residential parking lot is under construction, and it is decoupled from rent. It is, it'll be kind of free, first come, first served. And we expect that there will be a waitlist if demand exceeds the available parking spaces. So it is, I think, already intended to be decoupled. As we mentioned, the, the income mix of this project is affordable housing, eighty percent A M I and below. And if we finance some of these parking lots with low-income housing tax credits, I think they will remain free of charge. So it'll be the lucky few who get a reserved parking spot.
That last sentence?
So a lot of, so some of our residential parking lots, at least the first one that we've built, and we expect will probably continue to finance the rest of the project in a similar fashion. It's funded in part by low-income housing tax credit, kind of corresponding with income mix of the building. So there will be no charge for that parking.
Understood. Understood. Thank you. The, the other question that I have has to do with the resiliency measures that you hinted at. But I was wondering if you can expand that a little bit on in terms of both the proximity to the current or the preliminary one-hundred-year floodplain and five-hundred?
Mm-hmm.
But also the projections? Because i- it sounds like incrementally, the exposure is going to increase. I'm wondering if you can tell us a little bit about how will, you know, your, from your design, or how will your designs, how far can your designs bring us, and where are you expecting sort of like significant infrastructure improvements in terms of maintaining, you know, water out?
Sure. And I think I can speak to the development a little bit, and then I'll let our engineering team speak to some of the measures in, in the streets. So, and this is also controlled by the restrictive decks. Every time we design a new building, we revisit these requirements. But we've committed, under our agreement recorded on this site, to design all the residential buildings and critical uses to the five-hundred-year, to a design flood elevation that is above the five-hundred-year floodplain in two thousand and eighty, in the seventy-five percent sea level rise scenario. So I think it's pretty ambitious. We were able to use some of the natural kind of topography of the site, some of our cut-fill plan to achieve that. As you see, the easternmost edge of the site along Fountain Avenue is surface parking. And I think that is some of how we're sloping up, you know, towards where, towards where it matters, like residential buildings and the park and things like that. The existing site, it's really mostly the eastern edge kind of that is in that floodplain. So we've left that a little bit undeveloped as surface parking, and then we slope up so that the critical part of the Alafia development is designed to that two thousand and eighty, five-hundred-year floodplain.
I'll add, from the street resiliency perspective, you know, it was mentioned that we coordinated a great deal with D O T on the schematic geometric design. The coordination did not end there. Even though they're not map streets yet, we design them as if they are thoroughly mapped. We worked really closely with D O T's Green Infrastructure Unit, as well as D E P Stormwater Construction Permitting Group, V I P A. We, we are taking a great load off of, you know, the city system, the city sewer system. We are providing a network of hydraulically connected bioswales or rain gardens wherever feasible, where that is not feasible in the design plans. And actually, they've been constructed. I think they're some of the first ones constructed in the city. We've utilized precast porous panels. That's a new standard for green infrastructure that the city's adopted, as well as concrete top infiltration basins. So what we're doing here, in addition to the raised elevation, is definitely, you know, contributing to lessening the load on the city system.
Thank you. I appreciate your response, and would really, really appreciate any additional follow-ups or to actually see the technical drawings on this, especially on the, and I, you know, congratulate you, because what you said is right. I mean, given the exposure to the projections, more than half of the site, I would say, would be under the five-hundred-year floodplain. So that's, that's, that's quite ambitious and, but necessary. So I would, I would love to see that. Thank you.
Yeah.
We'll send that, we'll get that to you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions? Okay. Seeing none, thank you all very much for your time and presence here today.
Thank you.
Okay. I do not see other members of the public wishing to testify on calendar thirty-four, so I'll close the hearing on this one. Madam Secretary, are there any other items for our public hearing portion of today's agenda today?
No, Chair Garadnik. There are no, there is no other business before the commission regarding the public meeting. We'll have a special review session in a bit. But I do have some public information to share. For those who are unable to or did not wish to testify, you can submit written testimony online by selecting this hearing on the N Y C Engage portal, through D C P's website, or by mailing your comments to City Planning Commission, Calendar Information Office, one-twenty Broadway. Calendar Information Office, 120 Broadway, 31st Floor, New York, New York, 10271. The time is 12:30, and we will open a special review session.
First of all, we're adjourned on our, uh, public meeting, uh, for today, July 24. Now we'll open, uh, the special review session of City Planning Commission, um, to hear one item. Madam Secretary, will you introduce that item?
Yes. Good afternoon, and welcome to the City Planning Commission Special Review Session for Wednesday, July 24, 2024. The time is 12:31, and a quorum is present. The first item on our agenda is a post-referral review of a CPC certification in Brooklyn Community District 13. There was a follow-up memo from the applicant shared yesterday, and Hanif is here for questions.
Wonderful. Thank you, Hanif. Thank you, DCP team. Uh, let me see if there are any further questions for you. Okay. Um, thank you. Without any questions, um, I will proceed to a vote. Um, is there, um, uh, I'm gonna seek a sent by voice vote to send an approval letter to the Buildings Department on 773 Neptune Avenue. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you all. Eyes have it. Uh, this item is approved. Madam Secretary, are there any other items for us in this special review session for today?
No, Chair.
Great. Well, you have a, we have one additional item. Commissioner Goodrich, go ahead. Commissioner Goodrich, you have a question? Go ahead.
Heard something buzzing about this, that there was a, a tax amendment, and then the community, oh, sorry.
Uh, my very quick question is, did the applicant submit an additional tax amendment, uh, a week or two ago? Um, I have heard something buzzing about this, and specifically concerns around whether the Community Board had a chance to vote on that, review that, um, whether it was specific to the project site or the entire block, and if so, if all parties were given a chance to even be informed about that. So that's my question.
Great. Thank you.
It was gonna be on the...
Thank you. It's not on the agenda for today, but we will make sure that we have follow-ups for you. We happen to have our Brooklyn Director sitting in the room, so, um, you know, we just, it just happens to be fortuitous. So, uh, Alex Summer, go ahead, and, uh, I will note that the hearing on this item is coming. It's not on the agenda today, but go right ahead. Sure.
Yes. I thought, I swear I saw it on here. Okay, I'm sorry.
So, uh, that is correct. There was, uh, what's called an ATEX. Uh, it was a text modification that runs parallel with the application process. Uh, it was submitted about two weeks ago. It has been since referred to the Community Board and the Borough President in accordance with our, our, uh, rules. Uh, the tech memo, so the additional environmental review, has been posted, uh, today on the zoning application portal. Um, and so when it comes back, that information will be part of our, uh, public hearing, pre-hearing, as well as our public hearing process.
Okay. Um, and then a very quick question. Is there a distinction between when the applicant is asking, uh, for these changes to be for the site or the entire block? Is, is the applicant here asking for the tax amendment changes to apply to the entire block, or just a specific site?
Just a specific, uh, let me clarify. It is the, it is, uh, the same geography that the applicant is proposing for the zoning map change. So it is basically the same site, not for the entire, uh, city block.
And I apologize to my luck. And, and would, um, who, what stakeholders would have to be informed about these changes? I guess they, I don't know if they're gonna have a chance to be informed about it for the public hearing, but...
Uh, it, there were, any, any, uh, ATEX or A application modification has to be referred out to the Community Board and the Borough President, and that's been done. Um, and so because that needs to happen in order for the City Planning Commission to review both the original application, as well as the subsequent parallel, uh, ATEX. So it'll be, it's part of the public record. It's at the Community Board and the Borough President, uh, as of, uh, you know, a week or so, about two weeks ago.
Thank you so much.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner. Um, okay. With that, thank you all. We are adjourned.